All right. Good evening. This is the June 5, 2024 Cottage Grove City Council's meeting, which I'm calling to order. Our first order of business this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. So you please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Cambada.
Here.
Thede.
Here.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Mayor Bailey.
Here. Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is open forum. This is the opportunity, if someone wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda, is welcome to do so at this time. We did have a sign up sheet out in front, but I know Mr. Smallidge wants to speak to us, though he didn't sign up. So I think what I'll do is I'll first go to Mr. Gene Smallidge. And if you want to just go up here, Gene, and state your name and address for the record, that would be fantastic and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Gene Smallidge. I reside at 10992 Point Douglas Drive in Cottage Grove. I'm here to tell you 3M has not been a good neighbor. This is in regards to weeds. For the last forty to fifty years, there have been six of us farmers in South Washington County that rented fourteen hundred acres from the 3M company. I believe we all kept it in a good aesthetically looking shape. And in 2022, we all got notice saying 3M would no longer rent land to farmers. This was worldwide, which encompassed a lot of acreage. In the meantime, 3M did little or nothing to keep the land in a weed-free situation. I want to take you on a visual tour of some of the 3M land, as well as some neighboring land, and show you what can be done. Can we have the first slide there? This is adjacent to Innovation Road. I rented this field for thirty-three years from 3M. When they approached me in 1989 to rent it, they said, no wheat, no corn, no soybeans. This is the gateway to our 3M facility. We want it green and growing and beautiful the year around. And that's how I left it. Last year, they got around to mowing it about the first of September, when it all went dormant and dead, and at that time was a serious fire hazard. When I operated it, I mowed it and baled it for hay twice a year. And if there were any weeds, I sprayed it to eliminate them. Next slide, please. This is on Hundred Street, across from the Anderson Renewal parking lot. I farmed this land for many years. Last year, at my begging, they mowed it when the weeds were seven feet tall at the end of the summer, when the weeds have all gone to seed. This year, I made three calls to the city, two calls to the county, two calls to State Department of Agriculture, and I finally got them to start mowing. This is what their mowing job looked like. You can still see the flowers on the weeds there. Next slide, please. Here, where they've already mowed, in the center of the picture, that's Canada Thistle, which is a noxious weed designated by the state of Minnesota that you must remove from your property. Next slide, please. In the center there is Bull Thistle. In both cases, after they mowed, they haven't even touched either of these species. Next slide, please. And here, you see a ribbon of yellow where they totally missed a strip. Next slide, please. I have an alfalfa field right next door to their property where I still farm. I don't want contamination of my fields with their weeds. Next slide, please. After they got done mowing, you see they left me ample flowers. Adjacent is a weed called Hawksbeard. It's a biennial. It sleeps the first year, which it did last year, and it explodes in year two. Those yellow flowers soon turn white, and they blow just like dandelions for miles. Next slide, please. The first call I made to Cottage Grove, the staff person I talked to said, we've entered into an agreement with 3M. They said they're going to plant their acreage that was previously farmed to native grass, native prairie grass, so that they would have minimal maintenance. This is a prairie grass that I planted many years ago. It's right across from Anderson Renewal on the corner of Hundredth and Ideal Avenue. I want to tell you, there's nothing minimal maintenance about having a clean prairie grass. Your Public Works Director and I toured some of these fields a week ago. At that time, I told Ryan, I'm going to give you a dollar for every weed you find in my prairie grass field. I think he had to use his own money for lunch that day. Next slide, please. We think North Point Development Company has attempted to do a good job. They rent land back to me. And west of Ideal Avenue, they offered this land to me. I referred them to another farmer, and he's doing a good job with a rye crop that's totally weed-free at this point. But that yellow flower will blow for miles, and it will be in these fields in the future. Next slide, please. This is what most of 3M's fields looked like before they mowed. However, they mowed too late. Most of the weeds had already advanced to the flower and seed stage, so it does little to control them. They're going to have to get a mowing program where they mow, almost like you mow your lawn, in order to get ahead of this, or else use some serious herbicide applications. They aren't the only ones. There's developers who like the yellow flower also. Next time you drive down County 19, at the intersection of Ninetieth Street, the housing developer there has plenty of yellow flowers also. If we don't already have it, I would hope we would get an ordinance with teeth in it that would require 3M developers, farmers, everyone to control weeds on their property. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Gene. And I do know our staff was working with you, and I believe 3M and the state. So I will obviously respond back to you at that point. But thank you for bringing it to our attention. I will just share with you, it's interesting that that yellow flower, if you will, is a weed, because I would assume most of us look at that and go, oh, that's really pretty. But it's not. Now, the thistle stuff, I don't even touch that stuff. So, all right, thank you, Gene. All right. So was there anybody else that did not by chance sign up under open forum that would like to speak this evening? All right, I will go ahead then and close open forum, and I'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda.
Move the agenda.
Second.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilmember Thede, second by Councilmember Cambada. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Six is presentations. We actually have three presentations this evening. The first one is the Public Safety Board Scholarship Presentation. So while Ryan Pierre steps up to the podium up there, I think council will join the Public Safety Board in front of the council DSCR. So we'll let him get started.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Ryan Pierre. I'm our Community Engagement Officer, just here to do a quick overview and awards deal for Public Safety Board regarding the Craig Willery Scholarship. Cottage Grove Public Safety Board is made up by multiple members of our community. The board is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization, like I said, made up of citizen volunteers from various backgrounds. They have liaisons from the police department, along with fire and EMS. The Public Safety Board meets once per month and works together to promote the partnership between citizens of Cottage Grove and the Public Safety Department in support of, sorry about that, of a safe community. The mission of the Public Safety Board is to provide financial support for equipment training and programs to enhance safety and to provide crime prevention and safety information to citizens. Some community engagement and education opportunities that they are involved in would be Strawberry Fest, along with other parades, Night to Unite, Safety Camp, Police and Fire Open Houses, and other community events. Some of their fundraising efforts come from grant opportunities, variety of fundraising, including hosting Bunko events, K-9 plushies, and challenge coins, cancer and autism awareness patches, and other citizens donations. Most recently, they had a fitness equipment that was donated to the Cottage Grove Central Fire Station. They've also donated for portable speed signs, a large supporter of the K-9 program, including purchasing dogs and equipment, firefighter particle hoods, and the Craig Willery Scholarship. Like I said, most recently, the Public Safety Board donated fifteen thousand dollars to purchase fitness equipment for the fitness room at the Central Fire Station located off of Eightieth Street. The former equipment was donated from an exercise business and is at the end of its life expectancy. The firefighters work closely with the board to determine the needs and update the equipment to include free weights and squatting rack. The purpose of the Public Safety Board is, sorry, the reason we're here tonight, the Cottage Grove Public Safety Board is pleased to offer the Craig Willery Scholarship to residents of Cottage Grove pursuing post-secondary education, law enforcement, emergency medical services, and firefighting. The Cottage Grove Public Safety Board welcomes and supports diversity in the application and award process. Here's a copy of the application, which is due May 1 of each year. You must complete the application, submit an essay, and a letter of recommendation. And as mentioned before, it's for residents of Cottage Grove pursuing post-secondary education, law enforcement, EMS, and firefighting. There's more information on their city website for that. And at this point, I'll turn it over to the President of the Board, Julie Rice.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, chief coroner, family members, and guests of our recipients. We want to thank Justin and Kimmelsen for asking the board to present this scholarship to the community and to raise funds for it. So the Lions Club, several board members, other, excuse me, citizens of the community have donated funds so that we can give this scholarship award. This year, we went in and looked at our funds, and we were able to give four scholarship winners the award this year. And each one of those awards is fifteen hundred dollars. All of them are pursuing a career in public safety. We have two high school students that started in an Explorer Program. Now, the Cottage Grove Explorer Program is run by police officers. Ryan Systerman is one. Mackenzie Foster is another. And they help train young high school students between the ages of fourteen and twenty, who are interested in pursuing a career in law enforcement, or EMS, or medic school, whatever EMT that they want to go to. So this year, the, excuse me, the program enters a state competition with about a hundred other Explorer Programs throughout the state. This year, our program took fifth place in traffic crash, third place in embedded social worker and public safety model, second place in street decisions, and first place in suspicious activity. Now, each one of these potential law enforcement officers meet every Sunday. That's a big commitment for high school students to put in a Sunday every day, every week, to come and do their training. So we're very proud of our program. We help sponsor them. They do their own fundraising as well. So two of our recipients are Avery Christopherson and Colin Schmidt. So if you want to come up right now, they were awarded their awards also at the high school last week. So they didn't find out they got the award until that night. So now they're getting an official scholarship presentation. Our explorers also will police the parade routes and help out at other events. So if you see them, give them a good hi and throw them some candy in the parade, because they do a great job. So thank you for all of the training that you've already gone through and that you're going to be doing next year to pursue your career. Thank you. Our next recipient is Peyton Taylor. Come on up. Peyton is a current CSO for the city of Cottage Grove, which means she's a community service officer who goes around and helps on dog calls, and the neighbor left their sprinkler running too long, and any kind of calls that the police don't take. So she was, by Sergeant Nils Torring, she was recommended, and she has a great positive attitude for her work. And she makes an effort to meet with the public and help them solve their problems. So thank you, Peyton. Continued, she's continuing her career at 916. Yes. Okay. And our fourth recipient is already a member of the Police and Fire Department as a medic, paramedic. Chris Verling, come up. Thank you, Chris. Chris is continuing his career and training and schooling. You just don't get a degree and go to your job. It's continued classes, continued training, keep up to date with lifesaving efforts so that they can help the citizens of Cottage Grove. And Chris has been with the Fire Department since 2016, and fire and medic. So anybody that needs lifesaving, he's ready for you. So we just want to thank all of our recipients. Continue with your career. Make us proud to have you as citizens of Cottage Grove, and hopefully you guys can return as police officers for Cottage Grove. Thank you.
Well, before we do the handshakes and such, I do want to thank you, the board, for all the tremendous support that you give our Public Safety Department as a whole, whether it's fire, EMS, police. I also want to thank personally Councilmember Olson, who kind of got the Craig Willery Scholarship jumpstarted, if you will, and it's just continued to grow and grow. And it really does, you get to see the hard work, Councilmember Olson, of the work that you've put forth, getting the message out there, because it's going to help these, I'll say, young individuals, Chris. Chris used to work for me at a different company a long time ago. So these young individuals to be able to have a career in law enforcement and fire EMS. So, but to thank you for coming here this evening and presenting. Councilmember Olson, would you like to say a few words?
Briefly. Briefly. Chris should have got the scholarship for that mustache alone. I think that's pretty good. Yeah. I'm so happy to see you all standing here. And I'm so grateful to the Cottage Grove Public Safety Board for managing this scholarship program. When my wife and I started this in honor of former Public Safety Director Craig Willery, we did so with the intent to have young people, including you, Chris, like you, from the community or who work in the community, pursuing a career in public safety, get at least a leg up. You know, I understand that school is very expensive, books are expensive, et cetera. And then you have your post-training you have to do if you're going to go into law enforcement. You're going to have continuing education training that you need to do to maintain your medic certificate, which you recently received. So congratulations on that. And hopefully, this is just one small way for us to demonstrate that we believe in you. We're grateful for the work that you do for the community today. And we look forward to the work you're going to do for the community moving forward. And hopefully, this is going to help you out a little bit. Thanks.
So let's give them one more round of applause, and I'm going to go start doing the handshakes. All right. It's always fun to be able to do that, to have the opportunity to be at the Park High Senior Event, as did you, Councilmember Olson, and see all the scholarships from the different companies and groups and such. This was also pretty awesome. So the next item under Presentations is a Strawberry Fest Presentation. And I believe one of the key members of the Strawberry Fest Committee is Willie Tennis. So Willie, do you want to come up front and share with us all the excitement of this year's event as you're walking with that boot? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. Thanks for the opportunity to get to talk about our event, Strawberry Fest. I've been on the committee for, I don't even know how many years, fourteen, fifty, something like that. But this year is a forty-year celebration. And so we're pretty proud of that, that it's gone on that many years. Thursday night event keeps growing every year. We have a lot, a lot of events for kids. And as you can see on the presentation here, I won't name them all off. And then, excuse me, Friday night, or Friday, one of the big things is Marketplace for Business Expo and businesses to showcase their businesses. And the lady we got in charge now has been doing a fantastic job. Three years ago, there was like ninety-three. Last year, she got like a hundred and five. This year, she's got a hundred and nineteen vendors coming. So it's phenomenal. And then bands is another thing. One of the leadoff bands is called Distilled, and that happens to be some local people right here from Cottage Grove. So that's pretty cool. And Tim Seeger, he was here last year on Saturday night, but he's going to be this year on Friday night. But they told me he's a country band, and I personally don't like country. But anyways, he plays a variety. I really liked the guy. He was great last year. It's just unreal. So he plays a little of everything. Then we have our ambassadors. They'll be selling buttons. And with buttons this year, there's discounts from the food vendors. Different, each one has different ones, but some of them have up to twenty percent off. And then they'll be going around greeting people and doing what they do. And then food vendors, we have a new lady in charge of that. Last year, I forgot how many she had, like fourteen. This year, she's got like eighteen food vendors. So everybody come hungry. There's going to be a lot of varieties of food. And then Saturday, one of the big things, of course, is the grand parade. And then after that, we have something new. We have BMX bikes. They're going to set up in the middle of the parking lot and do all sorts of jumps and flips. And it's really exciting. It's going to be a really fun event. And then car show, pet show. The bands for Saturday night are Stone Daisy and Those Pesky Kids. And then we'll have the fireworks at ten thirty, as usual, on Saturday night. And then And then, yeah. Apologize for events that I'm...
I think if you page down, that other page has the, there you go, all the different bands and so forth. People can see how some of that information.
Then I apologize for some of the events I didn't mention tonight, but there's so many. But then also make sure you come Thursday, because we have the Parkport Lions and Cottage Grove Lions selling beer and other little kind of drink things. So each year, it keeps getting bigger and bigger, and it's just a really fun event for the community. So hope everyone has a chance to come out and enjoy it. Thanks again. Dave, my partner in crime there at the festival, I think you have something to say?
Good job, Willie.
Oh, thank you.
So yeah, those people get the Cottage Grove Reports, okay? Inside the Cottage Grove Reports is also a flyer that tells you about some of the different things that are happening at Strawberry Fest. And also, if you page this up that was up on the screen, okay, we're going to have that in a few different places that has a QR code, because you know, you can find a lot of information at cottagegrovestrawberryfest.com, which we've been thinking about trying to shorten that a little bit, make it a little easier to type it out. But with the QR code, you know, you can just put your camera on that and most phones will actually go to that website. So that's an easy way to get to that website. And so I've heard that we're going to have fantastic weather again, but so we'll see if that holds out. And we've had, we've kind of gotten lucky the last couple of years, but so yeah, it's going to be a fantastic time again. Thursday night, we've been getting some things, you know, again, set up for that. We're going to even have some entertainment. Did you mention that, that the jazz? Did you mention that we're going to have actually some jazz music in that too on Thursday night, besides the different events and so forth? So, you know, and it's free entry and everything like that, you know, it's a fantastic time. So you got to just kind of round up the kids and yourselves and get on out there and have a great time. The one thing to remind people is that usually over the last few years, it's been on Father's Day weekend. And this year, because of how the calendar shifted, it's a week after Father's Day weekend. So, you know, people can't use the excuse that they can't come because they're gone for the weekend because of Father's Day. So, you know, grab dad and the week later and get out there and have a great time.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, thank you both, and it's been amazing. Every year it gets bigger. Was, there were so many people there last year. I do specifically remember there was vendors that had to close early because they ran out of food.
Yes.
There were so many people there. So that's a really neat thing to have. And then I did notice that, I don't know if it got brought up, is once again, the carnival is here. So if you want to get some carnival ride tickets or pre-sale tickets, I believe you can get those here at City Hall.
Good point. Right, and you can actually get them online too. If you go to the website and so forth, you can get tickets online also.
Perfect. And the only other comment I want to mention that's more about, I'm going to say about Willie and his business tennis sanitation, you know, since he is here tonight, I'm going to bring this up a little bit later when I talk about the Fourth of July fireworks. But I did want to, since you're personally here, I want to thank you and your company because every year that I have asked for the $5,000 donation to put towards fireworks, Willie is like, just like that. So tennis sanitation, other than all the things that you're doing and the financial pieces that you deal with Strawberry Fest too, that you support, I just want to thank you personally for your support as well as the four other businesses that are stepping forward to, for $25,000 towards the Fourth of July fireworks. So another big, big show coming this year. So very happy with that. So thank you, Willie.
You're welcome. We enjoy giving back to the community. That's part of the reason I'm on Strawberry Fest, just helping out the community. And I enjoy working with Dave.
All right, is he, you going to give money here for that?
Next time I need something, he owes me.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Fantastic. So hope to see everybody there for another big, big event this year. All right, our last presentation this evening is the 2023 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. And Brenda Melanowski, our Finance Director, is going to kick us off here. So Brenda, welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, tonight I have Rebecca Peterson here with Redpath and Company, a new face. We have a new audit firm this year. State statutes require us to have an annual audit each year, and so that has just wrapped up. And so she will be giving a review of that audit. At the end of her presentation, I do ask you to make a motion to accept the report for 2023. And with that, I will turn it over to Rebecca.
Welcome, Rebecca.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. I am going to go through a summary of the reports that we issue in conjunction with the audit and then some high-level financial summary information. You know, we work closely with finance staff during the course of the audit, but we really do work for you as governance of the city. So as I'm speaking, if you have questions, please feel free to stop, be it ask beyond point, or you can wait till the end, whatever works best for you. There are four reports that we issued in conjunction with the audit this year, and I just want to mention that some years, there's a fifth report that's required to be issued. Anytime the city expends more than $750,000 of federal money in a given year, you're subject to a federal single audit or a federal compliance audit of those expenditures. The city did not reach that threshold for 2023, so there was no single audit this year. The first report that we issue in conjunction with the audit is an opinion on the financial statements. And this is really our primary purpose of the audit, is to provide an opinion as to the fair presentation of the city's financial statements. It would be time and cost prohibitive for us to look at every single transaction that the city enters into during the course of the year, but we perform a variety of procedures to enable us to provide an opinion that the city's financial statements are fairly stated and provide a reasonable level of assurance. The result this year is that the city's received a clean, unmodified opinion. It's the highest level of assurance we're able to provide, and in summary, it's the result you want. I want to mention that on an annual basis, the city submits its financial statements to the GFAWA. The GFAWA has an award program, and the 2022 financial statements received a certificate of excellence in financial reporting, and we anticipate that the 2023 statements will qualify for the award as well. The second report that we issue in conjunction with the audit is a report on internal controls. We do not audit the city's internal controls, but as part of our audit, we gain an understanding of the controls that are in place and the processes and the procedures, and we do test some of those controls to a limited amount. And if anything came to our attention that we thought you should know about, or we identified any significant deficiencies in internal control, we would report them to you in this letter. There is also one item that we are required to report as an internal control finding, and that is anytime that during the course of the audit, we as auditors identify a material adjustment to the numbers within the financial statements. That's extremely common in local governments, but we're required to include it in this report. And this year, there was one material audit adjustment related to project costs and the accumulation of those. There was no errors as far as vendor payments or anything in that regard. It was simply a tracking methodology and how expenses were recognized. So one finding this year that's been resolved. The third report that we issue in conjunction with the audit is a report on Minnesota legal compliance. The Office of the State Auditor has a series of requirements that they request us as auditors to look at in conjunction with our audit. We're not attorneys, we're accountants, and so we look at this from an accounting perspective. We're not providing a legal opinion, but if any instances of non-compliance came to our attention during our audit, we would report it to you. This year, there were no findings of non-compliance reported, which again, is the result you would want. The final report that we issue in conjunction with the audit is a letter from us as auditors to you as governance with some key information about current year operations and just required disclosure information. It is a highly technical templated letter, and so I've called out just some of the key points here, really what you need to know within the length of that letter. The first item I have bulleted here is to let you know that the city had to implement a new accounting standard this year, GASB 96 on SPITAS, which is an awkward acronym, but it stands for subscription-based IT arrangements. And what this new accounting standard does is it recognizes that local governments more and more are entering into long-term agreements for software, maybe cloud-based software, other types of contracts. And when you've committed to enter into one of those agreements for a long period of time, there really is a liability that the city has that the GASB, the standard sending body, wants to see accumulated on the financial statements. So the city had to go through a fairly time-intensive exercise this year to look at the contracts that are in place and determine if they qualify for accrual. The result is that there was an agreement that was eligible to be reported on the financial statements. The net impact is about $15,000, so not significant to the city's financial statements at all, but it's good for you to know that there was a change. The next item I have bulleted here is accounting estimates in the financial statements. As a reminder that some numbers in the financial statements are firm and known amounts and other items are estimated. Two of the most significant estimates are both actuarially determined numbers. The first one I have identified here is the net OPEB liability. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and it's really the impact of the city having retirees and the impact on the health insurance offerings. As I mentioned, it's an actuarially determined number that's really paid over time. The city's not going to have to pay $942,000. The second item I have bulleted here is the net pension liability, and this is the impact of city employees participating in the state pension plan, PERA. On an annual basis, PERA obtains an actuarial study to determine what their net pension liability is, and then they allocate that liability out to all participating employers. And so this $15 million liability that the city is reporting is really your share of PERA's liability, and that fluctuates heavily over time, depending on what the investment market is doing and what the actuarial assumptions are. But PERA is not going to come looking for a $15 million check. This is just really representative of the future liability of having participants in the plan, and it's paid on a payroll basis when you make your employer contributions to the plan. The next required communication I have for you is difficulties encountered in performing the audit. If we had any difficulties, we'd be communicating them to you, but I'm happy to report that we had and staff was great to work with. Next bullet is any disagreements with management. If we had any significant disagreements with management during the course of the audit that we thought you should know about, we would also be informing you. And then finally, any other matters. If there were items that came to our attention that we thought were important for you as governance to know about that didn't fit in any other category, we would be communicating them here. There's nothing communicated this year, but I want you to know that we would be sharing that information if we had anything. Moving on to some high-level financial information, first I have some financial highlights for the general fund, and city overall. The current property tax collection rate for 2023 was 99.64%, which is very high. It's a nice, healthy property tax collection rate. And the city has a fund balance policy that within your general fund, you want to be maintaining fund balance reserves of 45% to 55% of subsequent year's expenditures. At the end of 2023, your unassigned fund balance was equal to 50% of next year's expenditures, which is right in the middle of your policy and a nice, healthy spot to be in. Here I have some summarized budget-to-actual information for the general fund. Just a couple items I want to draw your attention to. If you look at the total revenues line and go up to investment earnings, budgeted was about $125,000, and actual results was over half a million. So nice, healthy investment results for the year, and it really is impacting overall fund performance. Looking at expenditures, you'll see public safety was over budget by about $200,000. That really relates to some CSO time and other charges within public safety. But my understanding is that the departments really worked hard to toe the line and not fill vacancies that didn't need to be filled to help maintain the general fund budget. And at the end, if you look at the very bottom for actual results, you'll see an increase in fund balance of about $2.1 million for this year. There's really two significant items impacting that. First, it is the investment earnings that I mentioned, and secondly, it's the public safety aid that the city received right at the end of 2023. The city received approximately $1.7 million of public safety aid that was eligible to be recognized as revenue this year, but it's really restricted for spending. You can't spend it on whatever you want, it's restricted for public safety items, but it is impacting the results of the fund. Here you can see the general fund expenditures by function. That green bar is public safety, and similar with prior years, it is one of the most significant expenditures within the fund. This next graph looks at the trend for the general fund. That blue bar is total expenditures within the general fund, and that green line is total revenue for the fund. So you can really see that your revenue is covering your expenditures and your operations for the year, and then that gray bar is total fund balance. You can see fund balance is up a bit from last year, which is really where you need to be, you know, with your fund balance policy of 45% to 55%. Costs aren't decreasing, you know? And so in order to meet that policy, your fund balance really needs to increase incrementally with inflation and the budget itself. Next up, I have a similar graphical representation for the streetlight fund, where that blue bar is your operating expenses without depreciation, and then the gray portion on top is depreciation expense, with the red, or I'm sorry, the green line being operating revenue. In your enterprise funds, you really want to see your operating revenue covering your operating expenses plus some, especially with the enterprise funds, they're capital-intensive or they can be, and you need that gap between operations to help fund future capital. And here we have your fund balance or your unrestricted debt position for the streetlight Next, I have the EMS fund. Again, the blue bar is your operating expenses and the gray portion is your depreciation. The green line, operating revenue, you can see it fluctuates heavily over time. There's a couple different factors impacting this. One is the ability to collect on your receivables. You know, the city changed ambulance billing providers within the past year or so, which is impacting this, but also your ability to realize revenue here is really impacted by the market. There are some entities that are paying these ambulance bills that really cap out at certain levels and you can only realize so much. You'll see that your operating revenue, this past year was not covering your operating expenses or your depreciation, and that's really typical for local government ambulance services, that you need property tax revenue or other sources to help fund that capital difference because operations just don't generate enough to do so. And here we have a fund balance history of the EMS fund. You can see it's dropped over time, but it is still positive. And I do want to mention that the fund itself had positive cash flow this year. Some of the decrease in fund balance that you're seeing really relates to non-cash transactions, such as depreciation. There was positive cash flow within the fund. Next up, I have the water fund, similar structure with your operating expenses being your bar and the green line being your revenue. You have a nice, healthy gap between operating expenses and your operating revenue to help fund some of those capital items. Here's your fund balance of your water fund. And then we have the sewer fund. Different than the water fund, you will see that that green line, your operating revenue, is much closer to your operating expenses. My understanding is that there's a rate study that might be looking at some of this, but it really is important, I want to emphasize, you need to have a gap there to help fund that capital in the future. And your sewer fund balance. Then finally, I have some comparative information. The Office of the State Auditor puts out some nice summary information over time. They did not have the 2022 actual numbers available yet when I prepared the presentation, so I used statewide... so I used statewide budgeted amounts versus actual. And what this graph or chart is looking at is revenue per capita. And I'll draw your attention to property taxes. You have a healthy property tax revenue per capita, at least from a citizen's perspective, probably. And as we go down, you'll see intergovernmental revenues is higher than both the cities' past revenue per capita and state amounts, and this is really heavily impacted by some of the settlement funds that are being put towards the water treatment facility and other intergovernmental revenues. And then charges for services as well is above statewide budget and statewide actual amounts, and that's really impacted by some of the recreational offerings you have that other cities don't. The golf course, the ice arena, and some of your other parks and rec offerings are playing into this number, where it might not be apples-to-apples comparison with other cities statewide. And then next up, I have a similar comparison for expenditures per capita. I'll call your attention again to this capital outlay and construction number right here, about a thousand dollars per capita, which is significantly higher than prior years and state amounts. And again, this is some of those significant capital endeavors that the city has undertaken this year, the water treatment facility, I think there was a golf course project and other items that are playing into that number, so it is a planned increase there from prior That's all I have prepared ahead of time for you, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. First of all, thank you. Thank you for your first one with us as the new person. So, council, do you have any questions? I'll start with, I guess, Councilmember Olson.
Thank you very much. Took a little getting used to. We had the other fellow for a long time, so you did a nice job. Thank you. Two things that stood out to me, and I'd like to just ask a couple of questions on those. First, you mentioned that from a comparative revenue per capita perspective, we are at four ninety-two versus what I believe to be the statewide average of five fifty-seven for communities of our size. Is that accurate?
So this five fifty-seven number was from 2021?
I see.
Yes, yes. That would be the comparable number.
Okay. But if I look at the 2022 number, you use budgeted amounts, and we're still below that five fourteen.
Correct.
So what that says to me, and this is where I need your help, that means that in terms of what people are paying in property taxes, they're paying less than the average if they live in Cottage Grove.
Correct, correct. That is what this represents.
And on your next slide, you had the expenditures. So you had expenditures at the bottom, total debt service. We're at a hundred and eight versus the one forty-four number over that you had for 2021. So that's saying that in terms of our debt service or the debt that we issue, we're issuing less than the average. Accurate?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. Good. And the reason I asked both of those questions is because one of the things we're very proud of here, as I'm sure you heard a time or two, is our AAA bond rating. And that's something that the staff here works very, very hard to maintain. And, you know, the bond houses tend to look at that sort of stability as one of the key components, whether or not they're going to help us maintain that. And it doesn't look to me like you found anything that was out of the ordinary that might put that AAA bond rating in any kind of jeopardy. In fact, we're still continuing to operate at lower-than-average expenses, and therefore the property tax charged to the average property taxpayer is less here than it is for the rest of the comparable cities. And the last thing I wanted to ask about is fund balance. So our fund balance is currently at fifty percent based on your audit. We have a policy that says forty-five to fifty-five. In your experience, is that that fifty percent, is that typical? Atypical? What is it?
Extremely typical.
Okay.
I would say that the average ranges of fund balance I see per policy is forty to fifty-five percent would be the range of policies. So you are right in line with generally what I see cities use for their fund balance policy.
Perfect. And, you know, that fund balance is sort of, I guess you call it the rainy day fund, right? If anything weird happens, like a global pandemic, let's just say, were to happen, you need to have that fund balance in order to continue to operate and pay the bills. And from what you just said, it seems like we're right where we need to be.
Yep, very much so.
Perfect. Good. Well, thanks for all the good news. You know, I like going through these reports because I think it just serves to underscore the fact that the team here at City Hall and throughout the city does just an amazing job of, you know, watching their nickels and dimes while they still provide a tremendous amount of service to the residents of our community at less of a cost than they would get in, you know, several other communities if you just look at the averages, and that's our goal. We want to make sure that people find value here, and these numbers reflect that they do. So I appreciate that very much and look forward to having another good one next year. Thanks.
Councilmember Thede?
Yeah, staying on this, this chart right here, just want to go back to the capital outlay and construction, and that's a significant jump, but a lot of that is actually has to do with the water and our treatment plants, and it's actually money that's, you know, not necessarily coming totally from the taxpayer. It's coming from the settlements like on the chart before that you were showing, that the money, the revenue money's coming from like the three M settlement and so forth, is funding that jump that we see there, right?
Correct. There are external funding sources that are helping support this significant increase here.
Right. Good.
Okay. Any other questions for you two? I had two, just maybe there are more comments, and I'm not sure if those are really directed at you or it might be at our staff. Well, one's, I'll start with the comment. So the ambulance service. We've been having numerous conversations. I mean, obviously, you're auditing back for 2023. We're now, you know, in 2024, and we're still trying to gather it. I'll say, if you will, the concerning thing, I think, for the council has been, and I know our staff is the same, is as you acknowledged on the reporting, there, even though we had some cash flow, that number is, it's very, very tight, where we used to have a better amount of money in there, and the goal of that, having that extra money, if you will, in there over the years, has been to be able to pay for the ambulances and such, right? We're unfortunately at that point now where, because of, you know, Medicare, Medicaid, all those kind of different things out there that are having its negative effect on our budget, specifically for the ambulance service, that we're probably now at that point where we're going to have to start using our general taxpayer dollars to support that fund. The other thing I did want to share with the general public, though, and that is Cottage Grove does not just cover Cottage Grove in this ambulance service. We're required by law that we have to cover Sample Park, Newport, Gray Cloud. Is that it? I just covered those three? And because of our requirements on that, they do not pay anything. Their taxpayers do not pay anything into this fund. They're not required to. The only good news thing I'm hoping that we're going to see here is our senator, our state senator, was able to get a bill through that might affect or help us not just Cottage Grove, but as a state, for those, especially those rural communities that are having very similar situations as us with not being able to cover the costs, to be able to give some of that additional funding that might be able to help us shore up some of that amount. So I just wanted to let our public know, the citizens of Cottage Grove, that we don't have the choice unless we want to get rid of our ambulance service, and we haven't decided to do that. We prefer it being in-house, and we're required to cover other communities that do not pay us for the ambulance service. And then the last thing, and this is the one I'm not sure where I'm going with, on the sewer rate one, I know the sewer, that's predominantly the Met Council. Am I correct? So this is really pretty much whatever the bill is, so to speak, for using the sewer services, it just, no pun intended, it's flowing right through. So the citizens, whatever they're paying to that fund, is paying for whatever the cost is by, that the Met Council is charging the city of Cottage Grove or any other city out there. So I just, I thought I'd throw that out there, so there isn't a lot of, if you notice, there's not any fluff in that particular item there, and that's because it is pretty much a straight flow-through in that case. So anyway, that is, yeah, so thank you. That was it for my comments, unless there's anything else from council?
Justin asked if he could question.
Justin did, yeah. There you go. Yep, there you go. So council, if you would, one of the requests for us was to make a motion to accept.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Olson.
A second.
Second by Councilmember Garza to accept this financial report for 2023. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Brendan, team, thank you so much. Another great, great year. All right. So council, the next item on our agenda is seven, which is consent. Is there anything council wants to pull off of consent for separate discussion?
I'll move consent.
Seeing none, I will go, I got a motion by Councilmember Olson, second by Councilmember Thede. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So if you are here for anything on tonight's consent agenda, all of those items have been approved. Eight is approved disbursement or paying the bills. Who would like to motion?
I'll make the motion to pay the bills.
All right, so I heard Councilmember Cambada beat you on that one. Made the motion, you can take the second.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Garza, any discussion on bills? All right, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public carries, there aren't none this evening. Bit awards, there aren't none this evening. Eleven is the regular agenda. We do have one item this evening, which is the Enterprise Energy Community Solar Garden, and Connor Jakes, our associate planner, is going to walk us through this one. So welcome, Connor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Great to be with you this evening. The application before this evening is an interim use permit for a proposed five-megawatt community solar garden. The subject site is located in the eastern agricultural area of the city, adjacent to One Hundredth Street South, as well as Lehigh Road South, and about three-quarters of a mile east of Kimbrough Avenue South. Little background on the site, the site has been utilized for agricultural purposes as far back as city files indicate. I'll note on screen, there are two parcels currently for a total site size of one hundred fifty-five acres. A condition of approval will require that these two lots be combined into one parcel in order to meet the required three-hundred-foot setback from the property line to the solar panels. Before we jump into the site plan and walk through the rest of the application, I thought it'd be beneficial to talk through the ordinance regulations and just walk through the history of our initial ordinance and then our revisions. So in 2015, a few of you may recall that we adopted a solar energy system ordinance, which regulated community solar gardens. That ordinance was then revised in 2017, and there were two major differences that would apply to the application before this evening. One of those differences was the setback from the property line to the panels. So in the 2015 ordinance, that setback was the principal structure setback, which in an agricultural district is generally about seventy-five feet. So the revised ordinance in 2017, which is the current one, requires a three-hundred-foot setback, so creating a larger buffer of those solar panels from the property line to negate any adverse impacts. Second major difference was the requirement of a vegetative management plan, which details the maintenance of plantings, the seed mix, and other various factors relating to the growth of that seed mix, ensuring there's no weed growth and maintenance of that. So those were the two major differences. The requirements for a community solar garden are on screen before you. I would just point out also, the site has to be located within the designated areas of Exhibit A, so that map is shown on screen. The red areas are where a solar garden would be permitted or allowed with the interim use permit, and that area did not change from the 2015 ordinance to the current ordinance. And again, those areas are, or were designated based on the MUSA in that we don't envision utilities being extended to those parcels within the near future, so allowing interim use to operate there, recognizing utilities won't serve within the near future. The site is zoned Ag One agricultural and guided as agricultural in the 2040 comprehensive plan. The use is permitted with an interim use permit. The proposed length of the interim use permit before this evening is twenty-five years, and then a possible extension of up to ten years after that twenty-five years. So a condition of approval does note the length of twenty-five years and then that extension of up to ten years, which would be granted by the city council. And then I would note that condition also adds within that extension period that if a development application is received on an adjacent parcel, the solar use would have to cease and be removed following the decommissioning plan and then restored to its current state of pre-construction. Moving into the site plan, the site plan is on screen before you. However, before we jump meeting on May fourteenth, there were four residents in attendance, and I'll kind of talk through their concerns and how the applicant has worked to mitigate those as we move through the site plan. So the proposal is for a thirty-five-acre array area on the one hundred fifty-five-acre site. Note, the array area is where the panels are located. That does meet the three-hundred-foot setback after the parcels are combined. That setback is indicated by the red dash line on the site plan before you. The rows of panels are proposed to run north and south and pivot on a single axis to follow the sun horizontally. The maximum height of the panels would be ten feet at full tilt. This design is lower profile than the kind of fixed panels we see within the community, so lower profile, less visual impact to adjacent property owners and vehicles traveling down roadways where you might see the project. And the other thing I would note is that there's no noise created from that pivoting motion. We actually have one solar farm within the community that does have this kind of pivoting motion, and we haven't received any complaints related to noise or any other complaints on that site. The applicant is proposing five equipment pads, each is two hundred square feet in size, and all of them are located within that secured array area. The array area is proposed to be secured by a six-foot-tall chain-link fence that will be black-coated. A concern at the neighborhood meeting was the color of the chain-link fence, so ensuring that fence blends into the environment and we keep that country feel within the area. So the residents requested either black or green-coated fence. The applicant has agreed to provide that black-coated fence, and a condition of approval does require that fence be black-coated as well. And then, again, just to note, that fence is proposed to just surround the array area, so the thirty-five acres and not the whole site. Moving into transportation and site access, access is proposed off of Lehigh Road South and proposed to be a Class Five that would run along that south boundary and then up into the solar site to provide access. I would note, a concern at the neighborhood meeting was related to construction traffic and the current condition of both Lehigh Road and One Hundredth Street South, and ensuring there's no adverse impacts from the construction traffic. So a condition of approval will require that the applicant enter into a memorandum of understanding, which will detail the applicant's responsibility to document that designated route pre-construction traffic and post-construction traffic, and then restoring that road to its pre-construction traffic state. I would note that staff hasn't designated or decided on a designated construction traffic route, although that flows from Lehigh Road into the site or Kimbrough up to One Hundredth Street. Will be determined as we work through the proposal and that memorandum of understanding, but the applicant would be responsible for those repairs and ensuring there's no, the road isn't in worse condition after the construction traffic. Terms of traffic, the majority of that traffic will be construction traffic after the site is constructed and completed. Access to the site would be minimal. The engineer of the site would access approximately two times per year just to ensure it's operating as intended, fix any panels along those lines. And then a concern at the neighborhood meeting was also related to weed growth and mitigating weeds and the concern there. So the applicant did agree that maintenance crews would access the site once per month to ensure that weed growth is being managed, mitigated, and then also that vegetative management plan is being followed. And so I mentioned that a requirement of the current ordinance is a vegetative management plan that details the seed mix, ensuring that meets state requirements, and then just that restoration plan for the array area itself. And so the applicant did submit a detailed VMP that meets code requirements, proposing a native pollinator-friendly seed mix, and they've also provided a detailed maintenance plan, both for the establishment phase, which is years one to three, and then the maintenance phase, which is years four-plus. And so we have our consultant reviewing that and ensuring that meets our standards, and then providing an inspection protocol that we would follow to ensure weed growth's being mitigated and that seed mix is really taking and being established as intended. City code does require a decommissioning plan be provided, which outlines the restoration of that land to its pre-construction condition. The outline of that process is on screen before you, but the one thing I wanted to note is that the city, the application does require that we receive a decommissioning letter of credit, which is the amount of one hundred twenty-five percent of that decommissioning estimate. So if at such time when that interim use permit would expire, we would then have the money on hand to remove and restore the site if the applicant or owner at the time doesn't do that, so. As I mentioned previously, the applicant did hold the neighborhood meeting with four residents in attendance. The main concerns are listed on the screen before you, just to talk through those. So construction traffic being mitigated through that memorandum of understanding, proposed utility pole locations. So we started with, the applicant's original proposal had those poles on the south of the access road. We then moved them to the north to mitigate concerns with those poles located in the area between the road and the property. in the area between the road and the property line, which is about 27 and a half feet. And a condition of approval will require that those lines be undergrounded, so no poles would be allowed as we work through that process pursuant to city code. Management to weed growth will be dealt with through the vegetative management plan as mentioned. And there was one, there was a concern related to water runoff to adjacent property. So the applicant has submitted a detailed stormwater management plan that will meet city code requirements and would not allow for additional runoff to adjacent properties. With that, I'll leave the recommendation on screen before you. Staff's available for any questions, and applicants and attendants as well.
All right, thank you, Connor. So first, council, yeah, I will start with council questions for staff. Council member Garza.
You mentioned the, first off, thank you for the presentation. Very, a lot of good information. The fencing, you said that it is going in green, but the residents ask, or going in black, but the residents asked to possibly blend in. Was there a reason why they couldn't do green or?
Yeah, as we worked through at the neighborhood meeting, council member Garza, the residents and applicant kind of preferred that black fence to blend in more with the darker color of that. So it's preferred to have the black or the green from residents' point of view.
And then you also mentioned about the weed mitigation. So we just had the young man here with his situation, so I'm just hoping that we won't find ourselves in that situation with this place that's only being maintained, I think it said, twice a month or once a month?
Yeah, council member Garza, so we at a minimum will require the maintenance crew to go once per month. However, we would be, you know, ensuring that site has minimal weed growth. If we receive complaints, we would obviously address those within a timely manner. But then we actually would have our consultant conducting regular inspections of that site, ensuring the seed mix is taking and then the weeds are being mitigated. And part of that plan, and what the inspector would do in that case is create a map that shows, hey, here's where the weed areas are, we need to mitigate those, and then work through that process, so.
Thank you.
Okay, council, I have something to add, but any comments? I was glad you brought up about the poles. I was reading through the packet from the planning commission, and I know there were some discussions about the poles. And I know my council, I do council over Thede, but having overhead power lines is a pet peeve of mine, especially in any new development. And in this particular case, I'm glad you have it in there because we've required it with every other solar array that we've done in Cottage Grove. So I just, I know there were some conversations going back and forth about that back then, but, you know, I would not personally want to have poles above ground when we're required all of the others to be below ground with, with that being said. So I was glad to see that, that even though that was discussed a bit back and forth during the planning commission, I did note that, I did notice that condition number six is basically stating to follow the city's policy and the city code. So I just wanted to mention that from a standpoint there. And I don't think we've had, just from a weed standpoint and such, I think the other solar arrays have been well-received and that we haven't had any complaints, farmers or anything in those particular areas, correct?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just note, so we have four solar gardens currently. There's one to the southeast of this project that we have received complaints related to weed growth. And so a letter was actually sent two weeks ago after receiving that complaint, and they were working through that process, had a deadline of yesterday. So we are aware of that one and working through that process. But the rest of them, we haven't received any complaints.
Perfect, so when, if somebody does reach out to us, like Jane did, we're going to react to it.
Yeah, that's correct, yep.
All right, sounds good. Council, any other comments for Connor? Would the applicant like to speak at this point and just state your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name's Evan Carlson, Enterprise Energy, 2925 Dean Parkway, Minneapolis, Minnesota. I am the owner and founder of the company. We're one of three partners in it now. Minnesota company, not going anywhere. I've been developing in Minnesota for almost a decade. Ventured out on my own more recently. These are, company's about two years old, but these are still very early projects in the history of our company, and they're very important to us. Our reputation's very important to us. We want to do a good job, and we've done, in my experience, the things that people like to see, you know, the neighborhood meetings and addressing certain concerns. Between the takeaway from the neighborhood meetings, one was the road, right? So that was addressed by condition. The other big one was weeds, and that was, we actually amended our vegetation management plan between the public hearing and now to better address those concerns. So what's unique about this is the big setbacks. You've got 300-foot setbacks to all property lines. And in most areas, those are going to be farmed. So the landowner, you know, he's got a, he's in the agricultural business, and he intends to continue ag production on it. But there are certain spots that we added to that VMP to make sure that you don't have weed issues, particularly the area between the access road and the parcel line, because the access road is a setback from the line. So we wanted to make sure that was addressed, we added that. And the area between the poles, so, you know, you've got those interconnection poles if you have them above ground or any equipment. So point is that if it's not getting farmed, it's going to be planted. So that better addresses it. As far as color of the fence, I'm open to whatever. People, there is some preference for black, but, you know, makes no difference.
Perfect. Well, I do appreciate you coming here tonight and sharing. And it sounds like after you did the neighborhood meeting, from hearing from our staff, you went back and addressed them. So thank you for that, because that obviously helps those that are going to be living near there feel comfortable with you and your company.
Yeah, thank you. I think it was a very productive meeting, yes.
Thank you, awesome. Council, any comments for the applicant? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So at this point, council, unless you have any other questions for staff, you have a recommendation up on the screen, obviously with the conditions that were already set forth. Anybody?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-087, approving the interim use permit for a five-megawatt community solar garden to be constructed on approximately 35 acres of a 155-acre site adjacent to 100th Street, Lehigh Road, and approximately three-quarter miles east of Kimbrough Avenue, as shown on the development plans dated April 19th, 2024.
All right, so I have a motion by council member Cambada, or do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Thede. Again, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Good luck. All right, so next on our agenda is number 12, which is council comments request. I will start with my council colleague down there, Mr. Cambada.
Thank you, Mayor Bailey. Just would like to start by saying, you know, as we hear from constituents many times about, you know, why are taxes going up, or, you know, how is that money being spent? It's always reassuring to know that, or I always like to reassure them that we strive to be one of the lowest-priced cities in the county. We're the second-largest city in the county and are, the city portion of the taxes significantly lower than our neighbors to the north. And I think we offer great services for what, for what we charge. Additionally, I want to give a huge shout-out to staff for, again, you know, getting awarded on our accounting practices and continuing to do a great job there. That also helps to maintain our AAA bond rating. And then lastly, for anyone listening or watching that wants an opportunity to meet up with maybe the mayor or a council member, Thursdays, we have our food trucks here from 11:00 to 1:00. Tomorrow, we actually have the egg roll queen, which is my wife's favorite, from 11:00 to 2:00. So I'll be here tomorrow at City Hall, and I'll hang out. And if anyone wants to pop by and ask any questions, I'll be there. And then lastly, June 8th, which is the Saturday coming up, we're going to have Community Night at the St. Paul Saints Stadium. So I think that we get there a little early, but I think the kickoff is at 6:00 or 7:00 p.m. So if anyone wants to come down and catch a baseball game, it's a great opportunity to get your kids out, enjoy some snacks, and hang out with some of the city staff.
Fantastic, thank you, council member Cambada. Council member Olson?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm looking forward to that Saints game. We've had a lot of fun as our Discover Cottage Grove team or the Convention and Visitors Bureau the last few years that we've been there for Cottage Grove Community Night. So I'm going to count on Dave to deliver the good weather. And I know that our staff will be there with lots of goodie bags and handouts for people to let them know about all that Cottage Grove has to offer and invite them to come enjoy Strawberry Fest this year. I also wanted to take a moment here, Mayor, to give thanks to all of the participants who helped out with this year's Memorial Day event. We had a little bit of weather, so we had to move the event indoors here at City Hall in the training room, and it was full. We were really lucky to have a great speaker in Herb Reckinger. This year's theme was a salute to Vietnam-era veterans, and Herb knows just so much about that era and has done tons of great work with the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund. So having him as our speaker this year, I think, was really an asset. And then we had a lot of help from the Washington County Sheriff's Department Honor Guard. We had a lot of help from the Cottage Grove Public Safety Team, Cottage Grove Administration, Cottage Grove Park and Recreation Team, putting it all together. And I think the event came off as well as it could, being indoors. Our Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Team for the Mississippi Valley here sponsors that event each year, but we couldn't do it without all that support, so thank you. I also wanted to congratulate the recipients of the scholarships for Craig Woolery this year through the Public Safety Board. Just so happens that on the evening that we awarded those two scholarships to our high school friends, as the mayor mentioned, I was able to be there with our Cottage Grove Lions Club to hand out five $2,000 scholarships to Park High School students. And their names are Tori Stepka, who also, if you're interested, was the recipient of the Park High Hall of Fame Scholarship, Macy Coffenberg, Abby Gerhard, Riley Simicek, and Amelia Reckinger, who just happens to be Herb Reckinger's granddaughter. So it was a really fun night there. We were really pleased that we were able to hand out those $2,000 scholarships, and it was awful fun seeing all of the community partners that were there to support our graduating seniors this year. I also want to take one second just to say thank you to our Public Safety Director, Pete Kerner. Today, we had the opportunity to go to the city of Burnsville's Police Department and deliver a check on behalf of our Cottage Grove Lions Club and all of the other clubs in our district, which is District 5M6, to Dan Anselman's brother, Captain Anselman, for the Burnsville Police Department, in support of all that they're doing to take care of the families of the three first responders that we lost in Burnsville here a short time ago. And Pete coordinated all of that. He made, he made all the calls. He ensured that we had a nice representation from our Lions Club there. And it was, it was a really special moment. So I'm grateful that Pete put that together, and I'm also grateful that Pete drove. So thanks very much for that. And then the last thing that I wanted to mention, Mayor, is we lost another officer. We lost a Minneapolis Police Department officer last week. His name is Jamal Mitchell. And I know that I've talked about this at the council dearest many, many times, but I think it's worth noting that, you know, he was killed in the act of actually trying to provide aid to somebody who he identified as, you know, being a victim of potentially a shooting. And as soon as he arrived at the scene and he attempted to provide aid to this individual, that person had a firearm that they pulled out and they emptied it. And unfortunately, Officer Mitchell did not survive. This is yet another example of the reasons why it's so important that we, as a community, stand behind our public safety personnel, whether it's police or fire or EMS. These folks are the ones who, they come running when you hear that bump in the night, and you're not sure what to do about it. And they're willing to put their lives on the line to save others every single minute of every single shift that they work throughout the year. And Officer Mitchell is just an example of another one of our public safety personnel who died a hero. So I anticipate that our Lions Club will be making a donation in his honor as well. But I would encourage anybody watching this at home or listening to thank a police officer, a firefighter, a medic, an EMS person, whenever you see them. Because what they do is they run towards the danger when most people's instinct is to run away. And sometimes it has deadly consequences. With that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
All right, thank you, council member Olson. Council member Thede.
Well, we already talked about Strawberry Fest. So again, just make sure it's only two weeks away and make sure you mark your calendars to get on out there, because it's going to be a great time. And I guess that's all I got.
All right, how about council member Garza?
I will just mention, we have a lot of events that are happening here in Cottage Grove coming up, and the Cottage Grove Chamber of Commerce is actually having the Swing for Scholarship Tournament, golf tournament coming up, as well as the Bags Tournament. So that's on June 24th, and that's a lot of fun. I went last year. So if you guys are into golf or even into bags, I'd say to check that one out. It's at Royal Oaks, or excuse me, at River Oaks, and so it will be a lot of fun.
Don't you dare be sending them to Woodbury.
No, we're not. River Oaks, Cottage Grove.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, so I have a couple of things today I just wanted to mention. So first of all, once again this year, we are going to have Movies in the Park, which the first movie is going to be June 28th at 7:00 p.m. What day is that, is that Friday?
Oh, Friday nights.
Friday nights, yep. So June 28th at 7:00 p.m., and it's at the Highlands Park in, off of 70th Street. The, I noticed in the pamphlet, obviously you can bring your blankets and your chairs. You can obviously go out there to enjoy that with you and your family. There's a big screen. I've been there a couple of times now for the last couple of years. The, the event kind of kicks off at 7:00 o'clock, but the movie actually starts at dusk. The first movie on June 28th, which is that Friday again, is Trolls. So if you're interested in that or your kids, I'm sure they will be. The one that I'm interested in, not that I'm not against Trolls, but July 19th at 7:00 p.m. is Migration. My grandkids have seen that, and they said that was an amazing movie. And then as you look forward, and we'll keep bringing these up as we get further into summer, August 16th, again, at the same park, is Wonka. And I did get to see that in the movie theater, and it's an amazing movie. So wanted to, wanted to mention that. There is popcorn, and there's events and things that are happening in the park kind of leading up to the, to the movies. But I also noticed on the flyer that was given to me that there will be some food vendors there, food trucks. Looks like for the June 28th one will be the 328 Grill and Mike Bart, which is based, they are the ones you see that drive around the city a lot of times, and they have little space down in St. Paul Park. So if you have questions or want to participate, there are some other opportunities I know out there. Please call 763-501-9278 for more information, okay?
I'd like to also mention that, yes, it's free popcorn, free lemonade, and free glow sticks. There is the food trucks that will be there. And there's also usually anywhere between 10 to 15 vendors that are out there before the movies that are doing fun, family-free stuff. So there's always a lot of fun that's happening at the Splashpad Park.
There you go, thank you, thank you for that. The next item I wanted to bring up was Fourth of July fireworks. I kind of mentioned it. Mr. Tennis, Willie Tennis is still in the audience in front of us here. I am pleased to announce for the rest of the council, and Brenda already knows this because we chatted, which is awesome, that once again, the vendors, my goal was to raise $25,000 for the Fourth of July fireworks show, which will be at Kingston Park this year, once again. And all vendors that offer, that have put $5,000 towards that fireworks event are all back again this year. So want to once again thank Willie with Tennis Sanitation. Renewal by Anderson, 3M has also done that. North Point, which is the major developer in the Business Park. And the one I just finally heard of officially this week was Hy-Vee. So all of them are donating $5,000 to the community to make an amazing fireworks Fourth of July event. So I want to thank all of them, and I know our staff will be working to get the information out to the press and that so that we can identify them. I would also, even though Willie's in the audience here, but if you know anybody that works for these companies or you see somebody that is a part of that company, please stop them and say thank you. They didn't have to donate, but they did. They didn't have to donate, but they did. And so I wanted to, I wanted to throw that out there. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up, and that's why phone keeps popping out, is, so Councilmember Olson did a fantastic job this year with the Memorial Day event, him and the team there. And the guest speaker, Herb, right?
Yep.
Is somebody that I've spoken with on a couple of different times. He is on the, I believe he's our Chair of the Historic, Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. The one thing I wanted to bring up, though, that he has also been very passionate about, and I'm going to put a little plug out here right now because I'd love to see this happen in Cottage Grove. He is involved with what's called the Wall That Heals. The Wall That Heals is a traveling 3/4 scale of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, DC. And we would, there is a tour scheduled that they set up every year. And so, of course, the rest of this year is already booked out, so they're always a year in advance. And if we wanted to host the Wall That Heals to come to Cottage Grove, we can, we'd need a kind of a group or people that are passionate about it to get together. And we can be in queue, if you will, for 2025, summer of 2025. And we would have to get in line, if you will, to make sure that that's the case for 2025. We have to get our application in by September of this year. So if anybody out in the audience that's listening or watching is interested in making this become a reality here in the city of Cottage Grove, you're welcome to reach out to myself. Obviously, Herb did say we can get a group together. He would, he obviously would help spearhead it. He is part of that group that has a travel around the country.